All right. Well, six o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would all please rise for the flag pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome you all to tonight's meeting. First thing I'm gonna do is introduce staff and board members. Starting over here, we have Adam Osford, Sue Bertrand, I'm Jim Pratt, Ken Hovit, Roger Hendrickson, Andy Watlin, Lloyd Graves, and Commissioner Tim Denny. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Move to approve.
Second half.
Got a motion by Ken to approve and a second by Roger. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. No additions to the agenda. We have a motion to accept, approve the agenda as printed.
Also move.
Motion by Ken is our second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second by Lloyd. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Agenda item number one is establishment of the Todd County Planning and Zoning Ordinance Regulation on Cannabis Businesses. We will have the staff report.
Okay. I don't have much of a staff report, but you do have the current draft of the cannabis ordinance in front of you there. And it was posted well in advance of the meeting for whoever wanted to review it. I will walk through some highlighted areas that we need to initially address and we can get more into the weeds as we move along here. On the first page, I gotta scroll down here. The first thing is the penalties for somebody operating without a license. We can charge up to $2,000 for that. So I set that at the maximum right now because we don't have to charge that month, that much. But our violation penalty doesn't have to be that much, but it gives us the opportunity to go up to the maximum. So that was one thing we have been doing some looking at. For this middle of the registration, there are a list of things there. Now I'm on to page two. Under, in the middle part of the page, we can add additional standards or things that we want to have submitted in the application. The first four items, A through D, were in this model ordinance which was sent, or posted by AMC, but it's from the Office of Cannabis Management for us to work off of. So we can add additional standards to what we want to see in the application. Right below that, in part two, included with the form, and right now is the fee, and a copy of your valid state license or some sort of written notice from the Office of Cannabis Management. But are there other things that we want to have submitted with the application? We can include things there. Moving down to part three, or page three, I apologize, under the third subsection here, number one, where it says optional there, it says a state licensed cannabis retail business application shall not be approved if the cannabis retail business would exceed the maximum number of registered cannabis retail businesses permitted under section F. So we'll get to section F here, but this is saying, we do have the ability to limit the number of cannabis retail businesses in the county to one for every 12,500 citizens. So in Todd County, that would mean we'd have to license at least up to three. So if we're gonna do that, this section applies then saying that we don't have to register another business if it exceeds that standard. If we remove it, then we would remove this part here. Moving down here to the change of location section, they gave, there's two options here. One, that a state licensed cannabis retail business shall be required to submit a new application for a change of location or two if they seek to move, but we're, they're still within the legal boundaries of the county. They need to notify the county of this proposed change. It's kind of a one or the other option here. My recommendation would be the first one, that they basically start from scratch with a new location and re-register that site. But we can go with option two there. The next part under that is renewal of a registration. Following suit with kind of the previous sections we looked at, are there just additional items that we want to see when it's renewal of an existing registration? I would imagine when we go back up here, these things we want to see in this initial application submittal for registration would also just be posted under here that we want to see those things when they renew it. Maybe we don't want to, but we have the option to put additional items that we want to see with that. The other thing I wanted to note is I did have a typo in part one there. That references, if I can find it back here, you can see subsection C, subpart three, one, that should be C two because that right now it's referencing that optional part right here, option one, which doesn't make sense. It actually should be referencing this section here with the standards or what we want to see in the application. So I will already make that correction, but I had that typo here. I took this model ordinance and then just converted it to the format of our ordinance. And I think when I was converting that, I got the section number goofed up there, so I gotta fix that. Okay, moving along here, part F, this is the section about limiting registrations. You can, the statute allows us to limit just the retail businesses to no fewer than one for every 12,500 citizens. So we have the option to do that. The third part there does say that the county shall limit the number of cannabis retail businesses to three businesses. But I think there's some more discussion to be had about the, you know, positives and negatives of limiting it, if we should or we shouldn't. So that's something we should have discussion on as we move along here. Moving down for the requirements of all the different cannabis businesses, there's a bunch of different license types. The first part here is setbacks. The first four you see are in the statute. I added the proposal of number five, that there be a setback for legally established residences. I say legally because if it's not permitted, then it's not legally established. So how would we know to set a, enforce the setback to it? And then just asking the question if we're going to impose these as reciprocal setbacks, meaning that if a cannabis business existed and somebody wanted to, for example, establish a new house, would they then have to meet the 500-foot setback to that cannabis business? Most things are reciprocal, but wanted to have that discussion. Part B gets into all of those different license types now. I've identified each of them as a conditional use here to start. Most of them allowed in, such as the cultivation, manufacturer, hemp manufacturer, wholesale, transportation business, and cannabis delivery are all conditional uses in AF1, AF2, and commercial. I have retail businesses as allowed only in commercial zoning. The hours of operation, just note that's taken directly from the statute to the, that's what the statute allows. And then we get into the temporary cannabis business requirements here. In that first section there, we see highlighted at the bottom of page five, this would, when they're applying or submitting an application for that temporary cannabis event, I apologize, I think I said business before, when they're applying for a temporary cannabis event, are there additional things we want in that application form? Going down, it talks about the things that should be, top of page six here now, in that form should include, right now it just says the fee and a copy of your Office of Cannabis Management cannabis license. You'll have to get that from the state also. Going down to part six under this section, it needs to meet the following standards. The application for the license for a temporary cannabis event shall meet the following standards. We want to know the location of it, the hours of the event, and then we should consider additional standards that they need to meet, such as is there a cap on the number of attendees? What are they gonna do for parking, to get off tree parking? Any other considerations like that, we can include as requirements for cannabis events. Going down, this is section 1205, this is the lower potency hemp edibles, which have been legal for quite a while now. They are, that, the retail of the low potency edibles is not limited by the three. It's just the, I don't know what you call it, the actual cannabis, the lower potency stuff is not limited. So right now I have this identified, it's existed for years now as an allowed use for retail, but only in commercial zones, so it matches our other retail situations. Section 12.06, it does give local governments an opportunity to be a cannabis retailer as a source of revenue, similar to a municipal liquor store or something. I don't know that the county is interested in being involved with that, but we can include that. So I highlighted that as a point of discussion also. Section 12.07 gets into the uses in public places. And then I just noted below all the definitions that were part of this model ordinance, we won't have a section specific to that. We will include those definitions in our definition section in the front of the ordinance. But that's what I wanted to walk through here to get started on the conversation related to this. Obviously, I anticipate this will take a couple of months to get through, but we want to have something in place and ready to submit to the commissioners to do their official due diligence on it. Obviously, we'll keep them updated along the way, but we should have this adopted by that second meeting of commissioners meeting, which would mean that the planning commission needs to make a decision on it by that meeting in December.
All right. Thank you. Was there any correspondence?
We had none.
All right. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance like to? Okay, go ahead, Roger.
Can you go up to the microphone?
You gotta go up to the podium, sign in, tell us who you are. Well, we might.
No, I only have a question, the very first highlight, oh, I forgot to sign in. But anyway, you, Adam made the statement, we have the, something about the two, up to a $2,000 fine? Are you talking, and it's only for clarification, is that an administrative fine? Or does the law enforcement have to carry that out, or is it something the zoning office can do?
I may have to find an answer on that. It's a civil penalty is the language in here, which I would assume would involve the county attorney's office.
Okay.
Issue that penalty.
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay. I would have to dig in to know the official answer on that, though.
Yeah, it's easier to do it beforehand, not after. That's all, sir. Thank you.
That was quick. Any, anyone else in attendance have any questions, comments on this cannabis? Any other public comment?
Is this stuff gonna be better than the road ditch stuff?
Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion.
I got one, one question here. I just wrote it down on, okay. Well, turn right page here. Under section 1204, temporary cannabis events. And over here, a request for temporary cannabis event that meets the requirements of this section shall be approved. I don't really like that shall be.
Well.
I would like more maybe approved.
I think what it's trying to say is we've set out performance standards in this ordinance. If you meet all of our performance standards, there's no reason for us to deny it, right? So that's why I think the discussion and making sure that we know what we want to know, what we're gonna allow, yeah, make sure parking is addressed and bathroom facilities or whatever, like if we have all that, there's no reason for us to deny it. The next section talks about that if you don't meet all of the requirements, that they're not met, if those requirements are not met, it can be a basis for denial. So it does, yeah, as long as they're meeting every single one of our standards, it's gonna be approved. I hear what you're saying, but we do have the opportunity to deny it if they don't meet our performance standards.
I just got a quick question. In the packets that were mailed out here, there is a map for every township.
Yes.
And the purpose of that was?
The purpose of that was really, so I can bring those up here too.
I mean, it's like an address map, for sure.
Right, so we took all the address points, let me go back up to that, I can't find that section. What you're seeing is all of these setbacks from section 12.03. So like all of the countryside schools, any, we didn't have any daycares, I don't recall. We had no residential treatment facilities. We took the boundaries of public parks, and then we took all of those address points.
Do you have a copy of that map?
I do, I gotta find it here, quick.
That might be helpful for the.
Sure. I'm gonna have to put this down here, quick.
Because these aren't all, certainly not all residences. I would say the vast majority of them are.
What was your comment, Ken?
I was gonna say, these don't, these aren't all residential address points.
No, nope. They are, okay, so here's all the maps.
Address points, right.
Yeah, so the blue is the residence buffer. If there was any daycares, I could scroll through here, but the yellow was schools. Green buffers were park boundaries, and then we overlaid that over all the different zoning districts. And the intention was this, to look at what space would potentially be available for a cannabis business to operate. And you can look through there and see most of these, obviously Todd County being majority agricultural, that there is, even with a residential setback of 500 feet, there is still lots of opportunity out there. Now, keep in mind, you know, there's topography and wetlands and all these different things that may make it more difficult, but there is space out there to enforce these setbacks. And but there is space available for the potential for businesses to come in.
These are, this is retail.
Any sort of, the, the way this, let me go back to this now.
Oh, that wouldn't be just retail.
Not just retail, it would be any of these different license types would have to meet those setback requirements. That's the way I've interpreted it up to this point. So if you have a processing facility or an indoor growth, manufacturer or cultivator, the way I read this section is it applies to all of those different license types. But that was what we were trying to show with that map.
That makes sense. So even cultivation?
What's that?
Even cultivation, if you've got.
Right, and cultivation, give me a second. It does refer to in here about you can do outdoor growth too, but you have to specifically identify the area and the number of acres. And then that area can only be used, you can't, the next, like general crop has rotation to it, right? You can't move it over here after you've identified this is your growth area. So you'd have that pre-established.
And that would, that would have the same setbacks?
Right.
But now if a residence, once they have the business at home, then that kind of throws out that spot there.
Right, and we could include that as a part of this, just like have, I don't know what a good example is. I don't know what a good example is, but we could add some language in there that if it's like home-based business type of thing, that the setback doesn't apply to the residents of the owner.
Right.
Right, so we, that could be a clarification piece.
If they still got another resident that's too close, then that would throw them out.
Right, yep.
Now, I'm looking on, on my map here of my township now, on county 48. Going east from Round Prairie, there's a bunch of this pink, what I call pink or whatever. There's a bunch of this pink, what I call pink or whatever, along there.
Utah, if you look at this area.
That is zone commercial.
This here?
Right.
I believe that is residential ten.
Right.
Yep. The yellow is commercial, which is tough to see, it's all right in through here along seventy-one is the commercial.
I thought that was all zoned, uh. Oh, yeah, R-ten.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? I got a question on the cultivation part of it, cause there's people out there growing it right now.
Right. I'd have to get an answer on that, exactly how that would be enforced, but my understanding is they would have to be licensed, even though they're pre-established.
Okay.
In this case, I know the discussion has been on the low potency thing, right? Because they've, it's been legal for a while now, right? But my understanding is that it's been a free ride up to this point. And at the start of the year, they're gonna have to register their business with the state and the county, even though they were previously existing. That they can continue to operate, but they will have to be licensed now.
Now, anybody wants to get a license, they, okay, they gotta have a state license, they gotta have a county.
Yep.
Who do they have to go to first?
Yeah, it's a really complicated process. I, the, the whole process starts with the state, cause you have to identify your location to the state, and then they do some preliminary checking. And, you know, give like a preliminary approval, and then the county gets notified of that, so we can start our process after that. So it's, it's gonna be kind of a joint effort. I think there is, I have a whole bunch of stuff here, but, and we can get these to you guys, but I, there was like a step-by-step guide I thought I had here, maybe I don't have it printed, on kind of how that process is gonna work. But it starts at the state level, and then they get like a pre-authorization before they come do the rest of the process.
Do, do these setbacks basically preclude or eliminate the possibility of it being within city limits?
Well, the city, some things, but we don't enforce this rule inside the cities. So each of these cities are gonna develop, I would think, their own cannabis ordinance, I would hope so.
The retail stores, you would expect to be mostly inside of it.
I would expect that also, yep.
And, and part of it's because of resolution, but you know, you look at like Long Prairie, it looks like, well, there's no, no place.
Right, and they're going to potentially set their own standards. These are in the statute, though, those first four, so those are, no negotiating, those are the setbacks. But they may add other requirements within the cities.
So the cities would have, okay, gotcha. This is for county. My concern was that you're gonna push these guys to have the retail stores out in the middle of the country somewhere.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
We got enough junk out there already, we don't need.
Well, I would assume they're gonna wanna be where the people are, because.
Right, yeah.
Be like having a liquor store out. Of course, that wouldn't be all bad, would it, Roger?
Well, I'm just wondering if we, if we can feed our cows to refuse.
Well, you probably can.
But then you had to overrated milk, cause they'd get him the milk, and then you can't sell it.
He's, he's gonna feed it just to calm them down, so they're easier, so they're all happy.
I can, I can get you one, but I'll put it up on the screen, too. Okay, I have to print it, probably.
All right, any other questions, comments? I think we got a lot of stuff to read here before we. But the county has to have something done by January first, correct?
Yeah, so we need to get this to the commissioners in December. Or else we are gonna be operating without any rules for a while, and we don't wanna be in that position, especially with something new and it's unknown how it's gonna work. So what I would say is, yeah, this is first time you're seeing it, first time we're having a discussion. I know I've got a little bit of cleanup to do and some comments and some questions to get answered, so I can do that. Between now and the November meeting, though, if you do have thoughts, ideas, whatever, please get ahold of me before the meeting, and then I can maybe prepare some of those things for discussion during the meeting.
All right, so I think we're looking at tabling this, so. Do we, somebody wanna make a motion to that effect?
Yes, so be.
We got a motion by Roger to table this. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Lloyd.
Roll call, Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes, motion carried. Just will go home and sleep on it, and. When you come up with a bunch of bright ideas, get ahold of Adam.
I'd love to hear him.
All right, our second agenda item is the Todd County ordinance amendment.
Yep, so this was returning from, uh, last month's meeting. You guys wanted some more time to think about it, and you had asked that I reach out for legal opinion on the topic also, so I have that. If you're ready to hear it.
We're ready.
Okay, so I reached out to Jason Kupuszek. And his response was, you asked me to weigh in on, in on requiring CUP applicants to obtain all required permits before applying for a CUP, as opposed to placing a condition on the CUP which requires all permits to be obtained before the CUP can be acted upon. For most applicants, it is not practical to seek all or other permits, uh, all their permits before applying for a CUP. Moreover, if all the other permits were issued, then it would be more difficult for the county to deny a CUP. My preferred practice is to add the, add the conditions, all other permits must be obtained prior to the applicant acting, acting upon the CUP. I would also indicate the CUP cannot be recorded until all the conditions have been met. This would prohibit an applicant from just moving forward with a partially approved project.
All right.
That's what I had for updates.
Is there any correspondence?
Uh, nope, that was the only thing.
So this part G was what we were considering adding, correct?
Right, adding that in there as an additional section to our already established section five oh five.
Do you wanna read through that? Well, I. Yeah, why don't we read it, or I can read it.
Well, I can, glad you want me to, just that part?
Yeah.
Okay, in addition to complete.
Well, maybe, maybe read the.
The whole staff report?
Yeah, that.
It's brief, so, yep, so this all goes back to a conversation on July sixteenth from the Board of Commissioners' work session, when a discussion was had about the need for the applicants to obtain all their permits prior to the app, uh, prior to the application of, of the CUP coming to the county. Inclusion of this required would, requirement would assist in the decision-making process to determine that all the requirements have been met prior to a county board decision. Uh, the draft language is below here, it'd be inserted as part G, and it would read, "In addition to a complete conditional use permit application, the applicant shall submit verification that all other federal, state, and local permits have been obtained at the time of application. Other permits to be considered include, but are not limited to, DNR water appropriation permit, MPC stormwater permits, NPDS permits, and local watershed district permits." Some items for consideration is what permits are be, expected to be obtained prior to the application. Each land use would require different permitting requirements. How does this impact the landowners wanting to apply for a conditional use permit? Permits will need to be obtained either way if the CUP is approved. How would this ordinance amendment be applied in situations where state agencies will not issue a permit until after county approval? And then, um, are there any other unintended impacts of this proposal?
All right, and just for the people here, as it stands right now, when they apply for CUP, one of the conditions is that they get all their other permits before they can start on their project with the CUP. So they are kind of, we are covering that now, it would just be in a different order, if we.
Right, the practice has been, and even in situations where we know the specific permits that are going to be required, we can spell that out individually as a condition.
Right.
And county board approves that CUP, that doesn't automatically mean that the project moves forward. They need to obtain those permits, provide verification back to the county that they've been obtained. Any other conditions that they may need to meet need to be done before we issue permits. And additionally to Jason's comment, we won't even record the CUP to the property until all those conditions are met.
Okay, all right, at this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments? Go ahead, Roger.
Good evening again. You know, kind of putting the cart before the horse usually don't work. And I think this whole concept, the whole application is quite ludicrous. Uh, an example of that this evening was, uh, what Adam said, uh, or made a statement about, before you can get one of these, uh, retail things for cannabis, you have to have a, a location before you can apply for a state license. Correct me if I misunderstood that, but you're kinda, you know, it kinda puts a halt to any permits for cannabis. If you, you know, what you were talking about, uh, getting approval before going to a CUP, the county attorney. But I think the whole thing is ridiculous, but basically, um, opportunity provides a chance of prosperity in all types of industry. Without an opportunity, you're not gonna provide a chance of prosperity. And opportunity provides prosperity, and regulatory overreach suffocates opportunity. So that vicious circle that the commissioners are trying to accomplish here just doesn't make sense. And there again, the cannabis thing is a perfect example, please correct me if I misunderstood that. But I believe, Adam, you made the statement that the state, you have to have a site location before the state will issue a permit. So there you are, we don't have to worry about getting a discount on pot. So that, I guess that's my statement, um, as far as this conditional use. And if you wanna make the conditional use permitting more, uh, doable or feasible, get rid of the requirements for some of these, for the need of some of these conditional use permits. A lot of times, why have them? It's regulatory overreach. And rules and regulations deny freedoms and opportunities. You know, an example of these conditional use things, we've got a very good country store out there. Dave is the only one left running it, he's, uh, five years older than I am, and I'm older than Dirt. And he's not gonna last, but people, hopefully he'll sell it. But are the new owners gonna have to get the, all the licenses before they can get the conditional use if they wanna change anything in that store? Doing this is gonna prohibit that possibility for opportunity for some younger person to take over our country store. And I'd much rather drive that half a mile to get a can of gas for my wife's lawnmower than have to go eight miles or ten miles to Staples or thirteen miles to Barville. That's my statement, thank you for your time, and I don't envy your guys' job. And can I ask one more question? Or bring it to your attention. Now, I don't recall verbatim the ordinance or for, for the, um, process of amending this conditional use process. I wonder if the county commissioners actually have the authority to start this process without having a vote during the commissioners' meetings rather than a work session? Just my question.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? No more public comment, we'll close the public comment period and open it up for board discussion. Anybody have any feelings, comments, questions? Well, I do, I, I agree with Roger. You're making him.
My wife never does.
Well, I'm not your wife. You're making him go spend money and jump through all these hoops before they get the CUP. I mean, if they come and get denied, they don't need to spend all that money. So I, and we already make it a condition that they get all their permits, so I really. Well, I do know what this is about, but I'm not gonna go down that road, so that's, that's the way I feel.
I would echo those same feelings, too, I mean, we're not gonna gain anything with this. We're not gonna gain the ability to do anything that we can't already do, uh, with a condition on the permit.
Right.
Just like we talked about earlier, so why, why encumber this even farther? I mean, it's a big enough job to do some different kinds of projects, like you're talking about, with all the permits you need. Why make it even harder yet? I mean, we can't be anti-business like that, so. I, myself, I would vote against this.
I have ten C degree. There's a lot of things that I think we make rules and regulations on, and down the road, we find out that that may not have been a good idea, and. You know, like he says, with, and I've never been to that store, I've been down the road there, and I see where it's advertising, but yeah. If they, older people die or wanna retire, is there the capabilities of some younger person coming in there without going through a bunch of hoops? And sometimes, if they gotta spend a lot of money and then gotta do some upgrading or something because of this, where it was grandfathered in now.
That's what I'm getting at, is the upgrading and the changing.
It, it could be the.
Or change something.
Difference between being there and not being there.
Right.
I can answer to that a little bit more. In that situation, I believe that country store maybe was established before the ordinance, so it's a, you know, pre-existing use.
Right.
That would travel to new ownership, same if there was actually a conditional use permit issued to it. Conditional uses are issued to the property, not the owner, so that would travel with it. Now, when it comes to other state permits and different licenses and stuff like that, I have no idea. But when I'm looking at CUP, yeah, they, a new owner wouldn't have to come get any new permits or try to re-permit it or anything like that.
Adam, could you reread what Jason's response was again?
Yeah.
Something there you said that he wanted to add or something, what was that part?
I can just read the whole thing again.
Sure.
Okay, um, it says, you asked me to, to weigh in on requiring CUP applicants to obtain all required permits before applying for a CUP, as opposed to placing a condition on the CUP which requires all permits to be obtained before the CUP can be acted upon. For most applicants, it's not practical to seek all other permits before applying for a CUP. Moreover, if all the permits are issued, then it would be more difficult for the county to deny a CUP. My preferred practice is to add the conditions, add the, I think you had to say, we add the conditions, all other permits must be obtained prior to the applicant acting upon the CUP. I would also indicate the CUP cannot be recorded until the conditions have been met. This would prohibit an applicant from just moving forward with a partially approved project.
And what, what he's saying is basically how we're doing it now.
Yep, right, right. And the county still has the leverage. And the county still has the leverage or authority to prevent the land, the proposed land use from moving forward until those conditions are met through a couple mechanisms. If they need to obtain a land use permit, such as in a feedlot scenario when they're building a barn for an expansion, we wouldn't issue that permit until the conditions are met. Second piece of leverage is, we don't even record the CUP. Even though the county board approved it, it doesn't get recorded until the conditions are met.
I would agree with, with the board too, what they're saying here with the having a condition on there always to kinda protect us and again, what Jim said right away, it's, it's, you can get a small fortune into, you know, all this licensing applications before you even get to the county level, so what's, uh, what's the point of doing it? The CUP can't be acted upon until it's all recorded, so yeah, I, I, I too echo what the, what the board has been talking about.
Any other comments from the board?
I think I would move that we, um, advise against the addition of this to ordinance and leave it as, is, leave the ordinance as it is.
Alright, we got a motion to recommend to the board commissioners not to add that condition to the CUP and leave it as is.
I second it.
By Ken, and we got a second by Andy.
Rule call. Ken?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes. Motion carried. It'll go to the commissioners on the fifteenth of October.
Before we move to the next one, can we take a real short recess? I gotta make one more copy of the staff report for this gentleman here.
Yep, that's fine.
Alright, thank you. Okay, let's make sure that comes up again, though.
Well, you talk about having sand and putting it in a pit. Back here, forty-some years ago, we had a neighbor that wanted to put in a hog barn and put a pit underneath it, but he was on sand. The contractor, when he was a young man, remembered that he worked for a, a guy making class-five gravel in one of the hills in my place-
Up, Jim.
-with solid clay.
Back up.
They bought-
Oh, okay.
The hill, which was too steep in the first place, bought that hill off of me to put in the line that pit.
We're gonna go on with this meeting.
Yep.
Agenda item number two is the-
It's actually number three, I apologize, so...
Yeah, it is. Ronald and Carla Monson. Would you have a seat up at the table there?
Yes, sir.
This is a request for a CUP to install a forty-kilowatt solar system.
Great.
And we will have the staff report.
Okay, again, our applicants are Ronald and Carla Monson. This is on parcel twenty-eight zero zero one seven zero zero zero. Site address one-one-six-nine-six, County Road eighty-two. Um, multiple zoning districts across the property, which is AF1, AF2, and Shoreland Natural Environment. Request is a CUP to install a forty-kilowatt AC ground-based solar photovoltaic, hopefully I said that right, system designed to supply in excess of a hundred and twenty percent of the annual average consumption of the primary use, uh, again, in AF1, AF2, and Shoreland zoning. You can see the overall site location here in Wycombe Township. Zoomed into the site here, off of County eighty-two. This is one of the site sketches provided in the application. This red outlined area is where the panels are proposed to go. And then just zoomed in on that a little bit more here. Um, these are the zoning districts, so where the solar array is proposed to go is right kinda down in this area in the AF2 zone. This lighter green is AF1, and the Shoreland zoning is up to the north portion of the property there. This is topography and wetlands of the site. And some site images here. Here, I'm looking east from the proposed solar location, so where they're proposed to go would be to my back. I'm looking east here. Here, uh, I'm again looking east, but the solar array is proposed to go in front of where I'm looking here, so the last picture was over by this brown shed. Um, looking north here from where the panels are proposed to go. And then flipped around, looking south. And then, uh, I'm back by that brown shed again, so the shed is to my back and I'm looking west across the proposed location. And then, um, would be at the far east end of where they're proposed to go and looking north. And then right up in the kinda the center part of this mode area is where the transformer and the interconnection location is proposed to be. Some ordinance reference here. Again, remember, we updated our solar ordinance not too terribly long ago. This is from Part B, Types of Solar Energy Systems, Subpart Two. Uh, that ground-mounted solar energy systems, um, are accessory to the primary use, designed to supply energy for the primary use, but may provide energy to off-site uses on the distribution grid, which is what we have here. The reason that we, um, are here for the conditional use permit is because of Part Four. The ground-mounted solar energy systems shall be designed to supply not more than a hundred and twenty percent of the annual, or the average annual consumption of the primary use, based on the most recent twelve months of, of time from the application. Designs to supply greater than a hundred and twenty percent of the annual average consumption shall be processed as a conditional use. So, because they're proposing to be in excess of that a hundred and twenty percent standard, we're here for the conditional use permit. So, with that, recommendation is motion to recommend approval to the county board commissioners with two conditions. That the applicant must obtain permitting and or licensing from additional government agencies as necessary and two, the submission of an interconnection agreement with the electric service provider prior to issuance of land use permits. I will note, we did receive a copy of the interconnection agreement also. We also noticed that the service provider did not sign that interconnection agreement yet, though. So, which is not a big deal. It's a condition. We'll have to get it before we issue the permit. That's my staff report. Mr. Chair?
Any correspondence?
We had none on this one.
Alright. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in attendance have any questions, comments about this application? Can you come up to the podium, state your name, and sign in?
Is it okay to open water here? Can I? It's just water.
Oh, yeah.
My name is James Sarf.
Thanks for checking in.
And I own property with my family. Parcel number twenty-eight oh oh one sixty-eight zero zero. And that would be right east of, of the Monson property. And I go the whole east side of his property and the north side. And my grandson owns a five-acre piece that was busted off of this property, so the non-resident landowners could own the damn thing. My comment is, right now is exactly, we've seen pictures of where the buildings and things, but the overall where is this gonna be located? Is there, can somebody draw a, a line where this is all supposed to be located?
Can you see my mouse moving there?
Yep.
This red boxed in area is where it's proposed to go.
Okay.
Just that rectangle area.
Is this gonna be a, is this he'll sell electricity back to the utility, right?
I can jot that question down and then we'll have them answer when you're done.
And if so, will that change the tax on that property from non-residential to commercial? And I believe, um, I've owned this property since nineteen ninety-one. And my parents owned it from fifty-six to seventy-one. And, uh, I know the property really well. My father used to farm that property years ago. And, uh, there is a discrepancy of the east-west boundary line. And it was brought to my attention in ninety-one. There is, can you, can you bring up the?
This here?
There, yes. Down in this corner. Here's an approach that was put in many, many, many years ago. And on the west side of that, east side of, west side of that approach was a rock pile. On the opposite side of that rock pile was a woven wire fence that ran up in there, and that was all pastured down in there. You can see the low land in there. It was all pastured. And in ninety-one, uh, Gordon Frye from Alexandria bought it. And he told me that that was his approach. And that was his land, and it isn't. And he sold it, when he got sick, he sold it to his son. And we had discussions over that. He surveyed it. And it was on the, survey came out on the west side of the approach. But there was a rock pile in there. Rock piles are big. And so, I always considered from fifteen feet that to the west was my property. And I farmed it. And when Mr. Frye came in there, the young Frye, he tore out all my no trespassing signs. He, uh, took the wire, the barbed wire, and threw it into my alfalfa field. When I went to cut my alfalfa with a hay bine, I noticed it, and I had to dig all the alfalfa, all the, the barbed wire out of that. They come and they use that approach, and they've been told not to use that approach, 'cause it's not their approach. It's my approach. And they were decent about it. They could use it, but they haven't been. And now, I don't think this, this permit should be they should be permitted to use this to get a, a permit, because there is a problem with the fence line. And until that's settled, then they shouldn't have any, and the, the, the building that's there should have never been built either. That five-acre piece, you can see the notch in there. My grandson owns that. And, uh, he there is, when he bought the property, the guy that had the property was, I don't remember, seventy-five feet in or, or more into the into that other property, that Monson property. And before they could get the, the loan and everything, they had to settle for whatever the survey said. Now, I don't know if you guys are familiar with adverse possession. But I've had adverse possession on that property since ninety-one. And they came in with their survey, and the survey, it does not trunk adverse possession. So, I've had that property for thirty-four years. And now, Mr. Monson has put trees on the side of that, on the east side of, of his property, west side of mine. And trees are, you know, they're great. But when they're on line fences, they're not. And anybody has machinery nowadays, they're, they're just a hazard. That's what they are. And the crops, uh, a tree will go out, so many, so many, the roots will go up so far, and you never have a crop alongside a fence line. So, for now, this is what, what I have, and I don't think it should, this permit should be, should be, uh, he should be allowed to have it for them reasons. And I'd like to comment later after Mr. Monson has anything to say. Anybody have any questions, sorry? I'm a farmer. This is not green acres out there. This is Yellowstone. That's what this is. It's a taking of land. Everybody has a right to own property. But my sons, my grandsons, and my great-grandsons aren't gonna be farming this land when we have these kinda things come in here. I testified in the eighties before Congress about our non-resident landowners. I have nothing against solar energy, but when it takes good farmland away from us, it's wrong.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If none, close public comment period and open it up for board discussion.
Do you wanna answer a couple of those questions?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, first question was your, uh, about selling excess back to the electric company. If you wanna talk about that at all.
Yeah, thanks, first of all, Commissioner, for, uh, taking my application. Want to commend to you, Commissioners, uh, the work of Sue and Adam. I've worked with them on some other issues as well on our property, and I just, uh, wanna mention here publicly that they did a great job. And you can be proud of how they represent you and, and the county. Yes, the, the idea would be that if excess electricity is generated, oh, I should also introduce John Hagman. He's with Wolf Track Energy. He's here with me, can answer any of the particular technical questions that make him up. Uh, he is who we have a tentative agreement with, his firm, for, uh, building the installation. Uh, yes, any additional, uh, electricity generated over our use would be sold back to the grid. And we do have an agreement that was generated, uh, from Minnesota Power. We're, we're very unique in, in this area. There's only two of us on Minnesota Power in this area. And that's John Sarf, who has that four-and-a-half acre piece there, and us. Everybody else has different. If you've seen the, the way, uh, power is distributed here in this area of Todd County, it's, it's a jigsaw puzzle. But we're the only two on Minnesota Power in this area. And, uh, the idea would be to go ahead and generate power that would go back into the system if it's more than our needs.
Alright.
The next question was about change in property taxes, which is an assessor question, and I wouldn't be able to answer that. And then, the other, the other comment, our question was about the property line issue, which again, property lines are civil issues.
Right.
So, that doesn't pertain to the application here tonight.
Right. And the, the solar panels aren't going anywhere near that property line.
Right.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, this, this solar system is not gonna be getting close to this property line that may be in this field, right?
Right, there, if you look at the screen there, they're proposed kinda just south of this line here, and this north-south line right here, this boundary line is the one I believe was being referenced.
The, the section nine point two discusses types of solar energy systems, but it references setbacks? But we don't know what this, it doesn't say what those setbacks are.
Yes.
Specific setbacks for these?
Yeah, they follow the building structure setbacks for that zoning district. So, that's an AF zone, so from a sideline, it'd be thirty feet off the line.
And it, and I'm assuming it meets those, then?
Uh, yeah, we would do that thorough review when they submit the land use permit application. This is the se, for the use itself, not necessarily the location of it. This is, this is for the use itself, not necessarily the location of it.
Right. Well, the main reason I ask is if there's property line issues. You know, and it sounds like the property line issues are, that were mentioned are far away. But if there are any issues that could come up, which it sounds like there could be contention, we'd want to make sure that we're not.
Sure.
Not close by. Know what I'm saying?
Have you ever had that line?
I'm struggling a little bit trying to figure out exactly where they'll be, but it looks like they'll, they won't be too far away from that little four acre.
Yeah, it'll be relatively close to that little acreage there. Yep.
On that picture you have there right now.
Yep.
We're looking east, right?
Yes.
Okay. So when those are installed, we'll be looking right down the row of solar panels.
Yeah, you'd be looking right down the length of them.
So how far to the north of that is the property line then?
I guess I, I mean, it's in this general area where you see this fence over here, but I specifically, I don't know. And I don't know if that line's ever been surveyed before.
Okay. So we really don't know how close we're going to be?
Right.
Say yea or nay based on property lines.
Right.
Right. It becomes a little bit of a question if there's potential contention here with.
Sure.
Property lines with, with adjacent landowners. That's the reason I brought it up.
A, a condition of approval could be submittal of a property line survey. That's a reasonable condition.
Did you have?
Yes, I do. It just. If you look at this picture here, if you look right to the left of it, there's a driveway. I don't know if you have that.
Yeah, I might have a photo that shows that better.
And then you have a driveway that belongs to my grandson.
Yeah, you can, this is a driveway. It does cut through the corner of Mr. Munson's property right here. Based on the GIS viewer here, it cuts this corner here. Um, and we were just kind of off to the side of it with that photo here.
This is my grandson's home. How high are those? Those structures going to be?
Probably about twelve, twelve feet or so at the highest, ten to twelve.
My grandson isn't here, but I'll tell you what. Sitting in his house and looking out, twelve foot structure, he sees nothing except them structures.
And don't we have something in our ordinances with these from some time back? That trees would have to be planted, which would probably take some time to grow, but to cover up.
Um, we have that, but that's for the solar farm section. But again, I would think that would meet that. Nexus to the application and a reasonable condition that a shrub line or something or a tree line be established. Between the solar panels and the property line.
But the panels would be facing the other direction.
Facing, yeah.
They'd be seeing the backside of it.
Yes.
Wouldn't be potential glare or something.
No.
No. What, what's the size of these panels?
Generally, um, sorry, I'm getting my mic here. Uh, generally they're about three and a half by six and a half.
All right.
Does each panel, is there like four of them to a pedestal or?
Uh, so these ones, uh, you would have too high essentially. So the bottom ledge of it would be about three feet off the ground. And then about thirty, thirty degrees, they're at a fixed tilt. Um, and then, like I said, uh, I'm just going off memory here. The last time I was at site, it was, you know, at a similar installation. It was probably ten to twelve feet off the ground at the highest.
So it'll be two panels to a pedestal. Are they on pedestals or a frame or what?
It, it's, it's more of a frame. There's, we, um, pile drive the posts and then there's horizontal. Uh, aluminum rails that go east-west and then from there we go too high.
So you, you say this is. This system will generate more than a hundred and twenty percent of what your average use is.
Correct.
What percentage is it being designed for?
Um, it is being designed, well, essentially we designed it to go basically as, as big as Minnesota Power will let us. And still, you know, um, go through what they call net metering where they will, um, pay Mr. Munson for that excess energy. Um, at the established rate that's in their, their rate book. Um, and that is forty KW, um, which is about a hundred panels.
Understand that, but what, what percent?
Oh, yeah.
Of, of his uses that represent?
Based off his previous usage, it's about six hundred percent, I believe.
How much?
Six hundred percent.
Six hundred percent. And what, you don't live there?
Nope.
What, what do you have there that consumes electricity?
We just have basic u, we just have basic use. Uh, we have outlets, we have workshop, we have. You know, anything that we're using when we're there. Fans blowing to circulate air in the ceiling of the workshop space. It's pretty, pretty light touch. However, I would say we, we plan to. Keep moving forward with innovation and different ways of using energy and that would include electric vehicles. Uh, and to be able to charge them there would be part of that. Whether it's electric vehicles for transportation of people or electric vehicles that can be used in a farm setting. So we want to have that hookup. We have a welder we haven't brought up there yet. You know, that sips a little bit of electricity. Um, we could certainly, you know, turn the lights on and leave the fans on and, um. Put some oil heaters in and burn a lot more electricity, um, you know, and then it would be a lower percentage. Um, but, but that doesn't seem to make much sense, uh, to just waste electricity so that we qualify for a, a permit. I'm happy to address any of the other questions that you have for me.
I was out there on the site visit and, uh, it's pretty much right straight in front of the, the buildings. That, uh, he mentioned. Right? It's exactly in front of them.
Yeah, if you look at the buildings here, like the building you see directly north of the panels. That's, uh, being used as a chicken coop. There's another building you can see part of behind. That's a workshop area. Um, there's another roof you can see there. That's kind of a, a shelter for livestock, goats. The, the, the home is west. So if you take it lying straight north, the home is there.
So it's not directly in front of the home?
Nope. We'd have a little space, um, where we could move it a little bit east and still have a straight line. Because of some of the other buried electric lines, um, and the setbacks, that's, that's the place that. It fits well between that and trees and, and buildings. Um, that's the place where it fits the best.
How many feet is the paneling is that, panels?
One hundred and seventy-four feet lengthwise. Thirteen feet.
Would there be the opportunity to be able to move it east? Is there any reason why it could not be moved east?
Could be moved east. Uh, I think what you see there with the little right angle, the, the red dash line. At the base there, yep. Uh, there's probably about, I think that looks like it's maybe fifteen or twenty feet and then we could have a straight line north.
The blue line, that's the property lines?
Yes.
So is, all are part of this property is, is owned shoreland?
Just a portion of it.
There's one condition regarding, uh, visibility from water. And I'm assuming that the water we're talking about is to the north.
Which is a natural environment lake. It has no public, it's, I don't even, it, you'd be hard pressed to really call it a lake when you look at it. But it is identified as such by the DNR.
So they're well away from any visibility.
Right.
Yeah.
To meet that specification.
So if you think about it, it's three forty acre sections stacked.
It's a hundred and twenty acres?
Well, the lake cuts into it, so it's a hundred and eight.
So that strip of grass that you're proposing to install these on, what use is made of that now?
It's lawn. I have an, I have a small apiary, beehives to the east side by that brown shed. Otherwise I just mow it and maintain it and it's, uh, ends up being a bit of a turnaround if we're doing any work in the fields.
That brown shed, is that such a, a good shed that it, you could not move it, would not want to move it? That you could move the panels down that far?
Well, it starts a slope. If you go any, if that brown shed were any further east, it starts to slope down. And then it drains into that drainage that you can see a little bit there. And so it, it would, it's in a, it's in a good level spot there for, I keep bee equipment among other things in there. And so it's close to the, where we have the bees and.
I guess I kind of agree with the gentleman. I, I would not want to look out my window and see the backside or the front side, either side of that. If you could move it a little bit away, so he could probably still see it, but he's going to have to look for it. And that's why I've asked if, you know, if you could move it down farther to the east to get it out of the view of the house.
Well, it is to the east of the house right now.
Yeah, a little bit, but it's still.
Right.
Quite visible.
It's hard to see topography from maps, but I'm, from what you've said, it sounds like the east of the shed itself is probably not, not very conducive to. To, uh, to the placement of these panels either.
Well, it's just that it drops off. We have a drive, we have a driveway right there. There's, uh, there's, I've had to install a culvert because water drains down eastward. Toward that drainage, which is kind of the shrubby area that you see beyond, uh, going to the right of the picture there. And so it's, it's, it's wet and it slopes down. Slight slope.
There probably wouldn't be a hundred and seventy-five feet worth of.
Oh, not, no.
Area to.
No.
Put them that way.
And also, you know, if we're moving equipment and stuff and such, you know, it just. You don't want to be getting up close to that solar installation.
I'm sure you've thought out where you're going, where you could possibly put it, but.
Yep.
We can't see that.
Any other questions, comments? Talked about tr, planting trees, but that's not going to help the view of the house, from the house. I mean.
Yes, and I'm very open. We had initially plans to plant trees along that fence line. But again, if you see, there's buried electric there, um, that comes to the, um. Transformer. And, and so, uh, where the solar installation would be. There's, there's area there, but not enough to plant trees behind it. But then closer to the property line, there's, there's room there to plant trees. Very, very much intend to do that. Would be very willing to accept that as part of the conditional use.
We've got just three classes for solar panel installations, don't we? One, basically residential, like what we're pretending this is.
Yep.
And then one community solar.
Yep.
And then one solar.
Solar farm. Yep.
This to me, I mean, the, the, the residential systems, we've limited to a hundred and twenty percent of their average use. I can understand that. That makes sense. But this is six hundred percent. This is almost like a solar farm. I mean, they're planting this for the sole purpose of selling electricity.
Except that it's intended to serve the, or provide energy to the primary use. We're in a solar farm scenario. The solar field is the primary use of the property. This is a secondary use. So that's the, the differentiation between the two.
But I can understand that being called the primary use. If it's limited to a hundred and twenty percent, but anything over that is way past that. I don't think it meets that definition anymore. I think it meets the definition of solar farm.
Uh, I think we're kind of nick, nitpitting there.
I think we're way past nitpitting.
Yeah, it's a, a long ways off.
If that, I guess my response to that would be if that, we should have set a standard. That if you're going to exceed a percentage of use, then it kicks it. We just said it needs to be a conditional use if you're exceeding the hundred and twenty.
Right.
So I don't think we can avoid that definition.
Yeah, I was kind of afraid we didn't have that defined.
This is five times.
Cause the primary use is still to generate. I mean, that's what he's putting it in for, is to generate electricity for.
Well, that's kind of, okay.
We don't have a limit on how much extra you can generate.
Yeah, we do, really. We got a hundred and twenty percent.
But if you're going to exceed that, it just requires a conditional use permit. It doesn't prevent it from happening.
Twenty percent states is that you need a CUP.
Can still do it, but it's conditional.
Yeah. There's no limit on how much extra you can generate. Well, right.
But there's not.
Well.
But tonight, there's not.
We're entitled to our own opinions, but not our own facts.
My opinion is I don't like solar farms when I drive by them.
But I, I was just searching out whether or not we can deny this because of that. And I, because of the way the ordinance is lacking on a definition that way.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like we're going to be able to.
But I, I do believe that there's some question about some of these, you know, there's, in the application, will the structure have an appearance of, oh. Have an adverse effect on nearby properties and will the requested use create an adverse effect on nearby properties? I think those maybe are. A bit subject to opinion.
I would agree. And then you should look at conditions to address those issues, which.
Right.
Tree planting things could address those things. And then if you can find conditions to satisfy that, you need to approve it with the conditions.
Right. And he already said he'd be willing to plant trees. So I think we should add a condition that a row of trees need to be planted. That'd be on the north side, correct?
That would be.
Of the panels.
North of the panels. I actually had trees on order to plant there, uh, this year and black walnut. Didn't, didn't come through, but, uh, Swedberg Nursery.
We need to address that boundary line too.
Yeah. And also I, I don't, we usually don't specify exactly what kind of. Trees or foliage to plant, but I think we need something a little faster.
We can specify if we want conifer hardwood. I mean, yeah, we, that's.
Something that's going to be taller than the panels at some point.
Well, black walnuts are awesome trees, but they're slow.
Yeah.
And they lose their leaves too.
Right.
Now, you were saying that you had underground power line there. For planting trees.
There would be space between, so the power line is probably buried, I'm going to guess fifteen. Uh, you can kind of see a line in the images of where it's buried. The top image. There you go. So you can see a, a, a dark line. It's above the solar and kind of goes, nope.
Well, that runs kitty corner from the corner?
Comes from the west side.
Oh, right here?
Yep, and it continues then to the, to the west.
It's on the corner on the lower side there. Starts at the corner and come.
Transformers here.
Yeah.
And the electric is buried roughly along this shade of light.
So on the west end of it, it wouldn't be much of a problem. You could go back. But by the time you get to the east end, if you're going to keep a parallel, you're going to be over the underground line.
Yeah, on the very corner, it would be. But fifteen feet over, you could still plant a tree probably.
How far is that house from the mine? You have any idea? Hundred feet? You have any idea how far that house is from the south line? Your grandson's. About approximately.
East-west is supposed to be four hundred and eleven feet.
Yeah.
And I would say it's probably, um. A third of the way over. Looking at it, you know what I mean?
You're talking about the south line though, right?
Yeah, from the, yeah, the south line to the house, the north in between there.
That was a problem right away is, you'll see the west property line on my grandson's. And you'll see the east end of the, of the property. And that was supposed to be four hundred and eleven feet, and it was established in nineteen seventy-one or something like that. And that building, the Monsons, was built there because it was flatter. If it would have been where the original line was, it'd be downhill, and so they moved that. Put that, established that building uphill and took that land away from, uh, Mr. George. And if you, if you show the overall picture there. Of the property.
That's the reason I was asking.
You're going right to eighty-two, there's eighty-two.
Okay.
The driveway is not the driveway to the west side, the driveway is right about the middle of the property, going down through slews and everything else. What on earth would anybody want to build a building site right next to the other one to crowd the other neighbor out? And, uh, he bought the property because it was, uh, it was secluded. He's a young married man, and they got this right next to him. I don't know that, why they need to, 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 to do that, he had all this land in front here to build a building.
The reason I was questioning, cause he'd be planting like you suggested pine trees, so you got year-round coverage. Then, as they get up higher, then in the winter time, there's, it's gonna be blocking the sun from the house.
Well.
Cause it's, it's gonna be too close, so it's kinda.
You're not that close.
I know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet.
It'd actually be more than that, cause it's at a bit of an angle here, you know.
Right. Well, and, yeah, they're not gonna.
Okay, it's way over there, so, yeah, yeah.
You wanna specify a single row of conifer trees?
That's what I would prefer, I mean, is that.
But is single gonna be enough?
Yeah, you plant them.
You can plant them fairly close together, they'll close in.
Right, when you plant in one row.
Buried electric could be difficult to do a double row.
Do we need to address that property line so we know where the setbacks?
We've got Steckel Johnner out of Alexandria, surveyors have surveyed that property line, has got a survey, I can submit it.
So we can make that a condition, not that you'd have to re-survey it, it's just would require them to submit a copy of that survey to us.
Yep.
I, I would be interested.
Happy to do so.
Is that row of trees going to, um, crowd that, uh, that line?
Well, we'd wanna.
Too much?
Yeah, we'd wanna have them far enough away so that the tree at its maturity would not interfere with the property line.
I mean, I don't know if we need it as a condition, but in my mind, it'd almost be like you want that row of trees to actually be. Where the setback would normally be, I don't know if that's reasonable as a condition or not.
What's the setback?
The.
For trees?
No, for.
Thirty feet.
You'll, if you. Almost say that the trees are at the setback and then, so consider the trees and the electrical grid as kind of one structure. I'm, I'm spitballing a little bit here, but all, that whole thing needs to be kind of at that setback. For, for your benefit as well as for the other property owner, because otherwise it's gonna be awful crowded in there. I don't, it's just a discussion thing, I don't know if it needs to be a condition.
And the reason you say that is so that if the tree grows, it doesn't?
Well, if they're only thirty feet away and then all you got a row of trees in there, then that's really crowding the line, that, that whole. Organization of, of a thing, which I would, I would include the tree line, the trees. As well as the electrical, uh, panels as kind of one thing that you're putting in that spot.
Trees?
No.
Okay.
The only thing we tell.
Thirty feet and then go with the panels in front of that.
Right, that's kind of what my line of thinking is, and I, I, I don't know if it needs to be a condition or if it can be a condition or if it's any, but that's.
I don't know, how, you can't change the setback requirement.
Right.
Cause the requirement for setback for the panels is thirty feet, that's what.
I understand that, and I'm just throwing it out there.
So you can't really change that.
There is no setback for trees, so.
We just advise people when they're planting trees and taking this as an example, that you consider the maximum size that tree is gonna grow to. And make sure you're far enough away that it doesn't cross the property line at its maximum radius.
Right, I, like, for instance, a spruce tree, they get real wide at the bottom. You know, I mean, that's gonna probably. You know, I mean, you're thirty feet from the property line, you're not gonna want those trees to go over the property lines.
It ain't gonna be thirty feet wide at the bottom.
They're gonna be brushing up against the panels, you're not gonna get in between there if you wanted to mow it.
Right.
You know? It would behoove you to put the panels further than the setback is kind of where I'm going, I don't know if it's anything we can put in the. Condition, say that you have to do it that way, but that's.
Any other? Questions, comments?
How is this solar panels, how are they, they ground clean? I mean, is it, is it just a, free for all weeds underneath these panels, or is there a? I guess he, he should be able to answer that, what, what happens there?
Well, you, what I can answer that is, the, the noxious weed standard, you have to maintain your weeds, there's thistles, you have to kill them, like that's. State rule, we have weed inspectors that can enforce that if it does develop weeds, but I'm assuming it's just gonna be grass under there.
Grass or gravel is the intention of, under there.
Sure.
This land that Mr. Monson owns is in CRP.
Well, that's irrelevant to this.
It is, because he just brought it up, noxious weeds, and this is the biggest weed thistle patch I've ever seen.
That.
Yeah.
I've bought that for years and years and years, and now you're gonna put panels up on, on top of it?
Well, I think that's a different, that's a different enforcement mechanism, that's not part of the planning and zoning office. But we have a county ag inspector that can enforce weed laws.
Try that, down that.
Sure, well, I can reach out to Nancy and.
Any other comments, questions from the board? If none, do we have a motion one way or the other?
I would move we approve or recommend approval, uh, with those four conditions.
All right, we got a motion to recommend approval with the four conditions, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by, motion by Ken, second by Roger.
We'll call Ken.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yeah.
Andy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes, motion carried, it goes to the commissioners on the fifteenth, you can be present if you like, but you don't have to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everything I had for this evening.
And that's, nothing else?
Nope.
All right, nothing else we gotta look at, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Roger, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Lloyd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried, meeting adjourned.